It's the family.
Hey, hey, it's T Boogie.
Gene.com in the streets.
And we are back another episode, family one ninety, episode one ninety. Don't forget to follow us on Instagram at the family radio. Hey, um, how y'all doing this morning?
We're good. Who are you though? You are at.
Oh, chill. Well, look, I, 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 I just wanted, I just wanted to show the road smoothly.
But we are all family.
Chill Will is here and I think excited because we got a good show. Uh, we're going to be talking to Jacksonville City Council District fourteen Representative Rockman Johnson. Of course, part of the family, he's been on our, been on our podcast before.
Before.
Yeah, we got a lot of stuff to talk about with him. He's been in office, um, almost a year. And then we, we definitely got to talk about this election that's coming up. Joe Biden, Donald Trump. Um, we, this is the same, we've seen this before. And last, and last time it happened, Trump thought he was robbed. So. Man, man.
But let's also not forget that we have local elections coming up and we talk about that too, because we got two major issues on the ballot this year.
We do.
Yeah. And not only that, I hope Rockman can spit some game as what we as blacks need to know about this voting process.
Exactly, exactly. So we got our own political advisor that we're going to talk to a little bit later.
That's right.
Here's the thing. What?
I was gonna say, let's not forget, our political advisor also has an affiliation with said Nickelodeon. So we, I have questions. You know, we're gonna ask the hard questions. I have questions.
We definitely gonna talk about that whole Nickelodeon thing too. Did Dan Snyder talk to Rockman?
We don't know.
Ask Rockman to massage him?
We're gonna talk about all of that coming up.
Did he get to follow?
Early, it's the take, it's the tank top and the Easter decorations in the back. We're in for a show.
Yes, we are. Boog, are you, you know, I think we might need to do some drug testing on here. Cause uh, I don't know, Boog, you might have.
Hey, I fail. I fail, I fail.
Oh, I'm failing too.
Yeah, I'm a fail.
Last, last episode, I'm failing. Obviously, I'm failing. Gee failing, chill. Can you hold this show together by yourself?
He got no choice. Chill is the only sober person.
Look, look, the only reason, the only reason why I ain't gonna fail, because I got this government clearance. That's all. That's why I can't.
You gotta have that. You gotta have that.
Yeah, you gotta have that. You can't, you can't mess the bag up, chill. Can't fumble the bag.
Y'all are out of control, man. Out of control. Hey, let's, um, I see Rockman is here. He's on, we're gonna click over to him in one second. Once again, thanks. Family, episode one ninety. Let's go talk to Rockman right now. All right, as we said, we have a, not only a friend of the family, he's part of the family anyway.
He's been part of the family.
He's been part of the family.
Been part of the family. Jacksonville City Council District fourteen, Rock Johnson has joined us this morning.
Yes, sir. It's so good to be back.
Big Rock in this.
Not just the family, my family. I love y'all.
Right.
Yes, yes.
This is my office. This is the, it's, it's a little different, a little eclectic. I don't have a lot of war. It's more art. I, I wanted to be kind of homeless. So. Folks come by and it's, it's so interesting. They're like, wow, why do you have all this stuff in your office? I'm like, why not?
But wait a minute, what is, what is that over your shoulder? Is that, is your chair white? Is that white Corinthian leather you sit?
Hold on, hold on, chill. You don't, you don't even see the, uh, the Kappa color references behind him. That is cream.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. That is cream. I'm sorry.
To accent the crimson behind him from the curtains. Look at that accent right there. That's a look like a clock back there. Do you see the? Look, you get no zoom in on this. Zoom in. We want it all chill. Zoom in. Look at, look at, look at that in the back. Look at the wall.
I'm gonna just like, just hold. I'm gonna just slightly just give us a little something, just a little something. I'm gonna tell you, the office is in all white and I tell you, it is, it's one of the reasons and everything I think we have to do is strategic. Uh, in this space, but one of the reasons why I wanted this office to be in white is because I wanted to make sure I was starting out with purity. I mean, the older I get, I really am into strategy. And yeah, of course, I remember Kappa Alpha Psi. Um, I got some, some good friends that accuse alphas and all the D nine organizations. But let me tell you, and I know we haven't started into the interview, but I want to tell you this. While I love Kappa, when I came onto this council, uh, there was, as, as most folk are in, in places, there were some strategic dollars that we could use. I could have given all of those funds to Kappa Alpha Psi. What I did was I took the funds and gave them to every one of the D nine organizations. Because they were already doing the work in the community. So it's, I could have kept it. We could have just said, hey.
Yeah.
That's how we grow community and what we're trying to do. So we'll talk.
Wow.
That, that, that's why we have you here.
My man.
Rockman, I gotta take my hat off, man. You, you have been doing great work since you've been in it. It's, it's been right at a year, a little bit over a year?
Yes, under a year, actually. We've been about nine months so far. I took office July one. Uh, we wanted, took some time to go through transition. So July one. Uh, we'll make the one year mark and we've had some, when I look back on it, I was just telling our team in the office, uh, I have a wonderful chief of staff. And I was talking to him as we looked through some of the accomplishments that we've made. Things are different. And I, and I gotta tell you this, man. Um, I am a black Democrat. I live in a white Republican area. The reason I bring that up is because I am under no impression that I will, I may or may not be challenged when it comes time for reelection. If that's what I'm supposed to do around for reelection. But what I want to be able to do is whether I'm here for four years or eight years. When I walk away, I want to be able to say, here are things that are tangible that were done. So that's why I'm putting in. Is this is supposed to be a part-time job? It has become a triple time job because I understand what the necessities are and I'm working toward it.
Yeah.
I see you doing a whole lot in the community. Part-time job? No, you are correct. You are definitely out there. You're doing things. I see you with your sleeves rolled up. You're doing physical things to enhance your, your area, your district.
And, and one of the things that, that people don't understand, and like all of us have had relationships, you and I, um, I've known everybody on this, on, on, on the show for decades.
Plus years.
Yeah, twenty plus years. We go way, way back. But I will tell you that I am the, as I tell people all the time, yes, I am the council member for District fourteen. But at the end of the day, when I sit on that dais of nineteen people, I am a city council member for Jacksonville, which means. I don't care if you live at the beach or Baldwin, wherever, the decisions that we make affects everyone. So while I'm pushing for my district, I also am pushing to push Duval forward.
See, I appreciate that because they give me so much flack about me being out here at the beaches.
It's a dual thing. I'm both a city councilman as well as a county commissioner.
Community activist.
Well, and a county commissioner. Think about it. We're one of the only governments in the state that runs like we do. Um, but the consolidated city of Jacksonville means that we are making city decisions and county decisions, which it makes things easier, but it's a whole lot more because we are the largest county in the state.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, to echo what you said, Rockman, I wanted, I, I, I wanted to say that I've seen you on site in other districts, supporting them. So I, I've seen it. I've, I've seen it. No matter, whatever the crisis is, if it's not your district, you are there. I see you physically there.
I, I didn't say anything about it and, and I'm a little emotional about this moment, man. But let me tell you, um, I, I didn't, I didn't really talk about it. But the day of the shooting, um, the, the.
Dollar general.
Dollar general on King's Road. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm in, in this space. So what I understood, um, that day. I hosted with the, uh, Marsha Fudge, who's now retiring, but with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, they were having what's called a house party. And it's, they, it was a great way to push African-American homeownership. And so they were having these house party events, um, all around country. And so I was able to host the one here in Jacksonville. We were able to get people qualified for mortgages, get them mortgage assistance for those people that may not qualify straight up. Well, get, let me, and, and in the words, because I know one of us is a PK on this phone. So let me tell you how the Lord worked. We were supposed to be.
Come on in here.
Look, we were supposed to be, we meaning this event, uh, I reached out and at the time I was still a professor. It was supposed to be an event at Edward Waters that day. There were about three to four hundred people at this event and we were supposed to again be on campus. But a, a pipe burst, the bursting of the pipe caused the air to go out. It was a summer day. It was hot as all get out. So we had, this happened on a Wednesday, like a Wednesday, Thursday that the pipe burst. So we had, and the event was going to be on a Saturday. We had forty-eight hours to try to create the event at another site. Well, FSCJ was a mile down the road. We were able to pull it together, get all the information out and move the event down because we couldn't have it at Edward Waters. So we're having the event at the time the shooting was happening, my phone starts ringing, right? JFRD is calling me. Uh, JSO was calling me, like everybody's calling my phone. Well, I was on stage. I couldn't figure it out. I called, they were frantic. Where are you? We're, we're trying to get to you. And I'm like, I'm here. Well, what I didn't realize that my public schedule had that I would be on campus.
Oh.
Okay.
They were under the impression that.
That you were there.
Yeah. So myself, Councilwoman Pittman, uh, former Congresswoman Brown was there, the director of HUD, like a lot of people were there trying to get people in houses. We didn't know what was going on. By the time I got back to the office, that's what we learned. And when we got. To the briefing, which, you know, I'm sharing some stuff, kind of intimate stuff. But when I got to the briefing, um, that afternoon, before we did the press conference. I was told that when the computer of, um, that young man was, uh.
Accessed.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's where he was coming and that's where we were supposed to be. And, and so if not, but for the grace of God. We would be having a very.
Yeah.
Very different.
Conversation.
And, and.
No, that's all right, Rock.
That, that shooting affect all of us that have lived on the North Side because when it happened, I was like, I just passed by that place day before yesterday.
Absolutely.
Rock, you on the EWC campus, you're right down the street from it.
Every day.
King's Road is a vital road going into the North, like, like that's one of the veins of the city. Like I, I've passed by that place and for that to happen there. Yeah, that, that, that shooting, that, that thing got to me, man.
All we could do, I went down there as soon as we found out, uh, Councilwoman Pittman was in the office as well. So. We ended up riding together over there. And when I got there, you know, the media was running up. I couldn't talk to anybody.
Yeah.
It was like, we just looked at each other like the people. I didn't go to the cameras. I didn't do, I just, the people, man, I stood in King's Road. I just stood in the middle of King's Road.
Yeah.
I, and, and there's no, you know, some of the, the other political leadership on other parties, and I don't ideologically agree. But it was that moment when I saw the sheriff coming out of the building and he looked at me and I looked at him. And we couldn't even talk.
Yeah.
And all, and he just looked at me, shook his head. There was no words. You know, you know, the energy.
Yeah.
And I knew that no one was there. And I remember the, uh, uh, the, the, one of the victims, there was one of the kids that were there. She came up to me and she was like, my son was in there. And, and I just need to know he's okay. Well, I knew, but I couldn't say anything. All I could, just grabbed me and just hugged me, man. All I could do was stand in the middle of King's Road. I couldn't even cry at that time. So I guess that's why it's hitting me now. But man, let me tell you, all I did was stood in the middle of King's Road and we just held hands and prayed. I mean, what can you do at that point?
Yeah.
But I tell you, you're right. Like anytime there's a responsibility, I, um, you know, we, we jokingly say, I'm so Duval and you know, come on, I spent. My, my formative years on the radio where all of you got, I was on the radio thirty years, which was weird, but thirty years ago.
Very weird.
That was my job. But I love, when I tell you, I've, I've lived other places. Um, I've worked in other industries. As you know, I've been, you know, on, on TV as a, as a news anchor reporter. Um, back in radio.
You know, we gonna talk about that Nickelodeon thing.
But this.
Yeah.
Something about this space and you all know it.
Yeah.
Energy of being here. There's something about here. And I think that I, I, you know, sometimes I, I whistle and I hear people say, oh, God put me here and I'm supposed to be doing this. I really believe that, you know, there's a reason for me doing this now. Cause this was not on the, dude, I, as you know, Will, we talked.
Yeah, we had that conversation. And I, and I was gonna ask you about that because before you ran, you said, like, I gotta do it. Like it, this is like, all the moons are aligned for me to do this. And I said, you right. I was like, it, it looks like this is the best thing for you to do.
And I, it wasn't the plan though. I will tell you, years ago, y'all remember G Wiz? G was like PD at one of the station, right? So G goes, you know, you're supposed to be a, uh, uh, whatever. I'm something, you know, you're supposed to be the mayor. You're supposed to be on council. I was like, dude, go, go run the radio station. Leave me alone. Like stop playing. Because at the time, I think I was living out of town and I wanted to come back home.
Yeah.
Um, it's before my mom got sick and I said, I called G or something. He was like, nah, that's not, he was like, I mean, you're good. You, you know, really good at what you do, but. You're supposed to be doing such and such and such. And I'm like, how you gonna tell me what I'm supposed to do in my life?
Wow.
What I will say though, is everything I've done, and I've heard Nat Glover say this a million times, but I get it. Nat would always say to me, everything I've done. Led up to this moment and it's prepared me for this moment. I get it. This, that's what this moment is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Um, look, Rockman, we have an election coming this year. People act like they don't know that. So, so you are our political person to talk to.
Anytime. And I'm always available to the.
This election has just, I don't know what's going on with the election process right now. Of course, we, we're back now to Joe Biden, Donald Trump again, against each other. Um, what, 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 what do we need to look for? Like, what do we need to even consider with this election?
So let me tell you, first of all, I want to start on the state and I'll move to the national level. Um, just.
I'm good with that because I, listen, I'm just gonna say this, abortion and recreational marijuana are on my top list. Okay?
And, and, and see, you're just like most Floridians. That's on the ballot right now. The Supreme Court, six, uh, forty-two, I think it was, oh, six to two.
Five to two, five to two, I thought.
Right. They just approved the.
Recreational marijuana.
Well, but the, the.
That it's gonna be on the ballot.
It's gonna be on the ballot. So no, they approved it to go on the ballot, which it's still, that threshold, you still gotta have a plurality of the voters to, to push it through. But there were people trying to keep it from even getting to the point where it'd be on the ballot. But the biggest one is a woman's right to choose. And honestly, they were trying to keep that off the ballot itself, right? And you see disproportionately that women of color are the victim. When it comes to, uh, the, the victim of, of, of these social determinants of health and poor outcomes. Right? These are the women that look like our sisters and mothers and aunties and, and, and daughters. These are the women that are suffering from that. So the fact that it's on the ballot. Um, that we are not going to allow a Republican legis, super majority legislature, Republican governor and Republican dominated, uh, Supreme Court. To determine what a woman does with her body, I think is so important. So that's one of the key issues that we're dealing with here. Um, of course, there's the requisite state senate race, state house races, those state, you know, those races here. Um, there's also a Florida senate race. Ironically, um, I haven't endorsed any candidate. I'm looking at all of the candidates. Um, and I'm gonna say it because y'all gonna laugh. So I'm gonna put it out there because I know how the family is. Uncle Luke Brother is one of the candidates.
Hey, 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 he definitely getting my vote. He definitely getting my vote. Anybody that could say, no, 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 listen.
Don't stop, get it, get it.
Get it, get it. Don't stop. Get it, get it. He getting my vote.
It's so funny. Stanley is nothing like Luke, but you can't live it down like that. You Uncle Luke Brother. His name is Stanley Campbell. He's a really smart guy. He's a multimillionaire from Miami. Um, his wife, I, uh, is the. Undersecretary for the Department of, uh, Health and Human Services for the US, you know, US Department of Health and Human Services. To give you an idea of how high on the food chain his wife is. Anthony Fauci and the, the, the person we knew from COVID. Reports to her.
Oh, wow.
Pretty high.
Very nice. Yes.
Yeah. And she's a black woman from right here in Florida and from South Florida. Um, came up the ranks. So Stanley is running Annette Tadeo, who is, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, not Annette Tadeo. Um, oh my gosh, there's a, a Debbie Mercusel Powell. That's who it is. Debbie Mercusel Powell. Um, who is running for the senate as well. Uh, she's a former member of Congress that was defeated when the lines changed. So you'll have those two candidates against each other, uh, in, in August, the primaries in August. The primary is just as important as the November general, uh, general election. And most people keep forgetting.
More important.
It, it's, cause it.
No, it's most important.
It's the reason why.
It affects us locally.
Absolutely.
That's right.
One of the reasons why you look at what we've got going on here and see that we are having a rematch of the last election. And that we should, come on y'all, we don't want to keep recycling. Like, I'm not gonna do this forever. You know, I'm certainly looking forward, um, to. And I'll share some of the, you know, later, I'll share some of the, the victories we've had. But I'm looking forward to doing this work. Preparing somebody else to do the work and moving on, going back.
Right.
Right. Doing radio and creating stuff, getting back to my podcast and doing those things. But right now.
Right.
This is work that, you know, I think we haven't had folks that are engaged and really who get it. And who are bringing people into the tent that hadn't been in there before. So voting in that primary election, so key, but absolutely the general election. I'm gonna tell you right now, I haven't endorsed anybody in the senate race here, but at the end of the day, I don't care if Joe Biden was seven hundred and thirty-two years old with giraffe toes. That is who I'm gonna vote for because I cannot understand how anybody could look at any of the other candidates in the race. And compare them and think that, and, and right now, obviously there's only one candidate, right? The former president.
Yeah.
That person is just not fit for public office. I'm sorry.
You saw what happened. When somebody shows you who they are, you better believe it. And he showed us.
I'm sorry. I said it. I said it back then and I will say it again. I, as a woman, black woman, cannot vote for someone that felt like it was okay to say, just grab her in the pussy.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I, he, he lost me then and with a few other things, but that never left me. I don't want to feel like I, I, that someone thinks it's okay to violate another woman. You're not the guy for me. And I'm with you, Rockman. Joe Biden could be a hundred and eighty-seven. I have to put my vote where it may do more good than harm. Voting for the pussy grabber is never gonna benefit me, my daughter, my daughters. My granddaughter, none of that. So I can't, I can't. That's a no for me. Hard no.
All right. Let's not even talk about understanding foreign policy, right? Since the last time, and I, and I, I say this, not to brag, I'm gonna tell you this. And sometimes, you know, when people say, I ain't saying it to be funny. Yeah, you trying to be funny. I'm not, if I say I'm saying not to brag, I'm bragging. I ain't bragging. I'm telling y'all this because I'm, I want it to be understood. That my life has allowed me to look at things from different perspectives, right? You all know I have degrees in journalism, but since the last time we talked. I now have an earned PhD from Jackson State University.
Jackson State.
And, and I tell you that, not to say I got a doctorate, is to tell you specifically that I am, am not only certified. But I use research and what I learned in getting, getting this doctorate as a part of my process. And what I know and understand, even when we're talking about foreign policy, that guy, the former president, is not equipped to deal with foreign policy. Does not know how to negotiate, does not know how to, to use the bully corporate of the presidency of the United States to make the world a better place. In fact, since the, a big part of the Biden administration has been undoing the negativity that the last administration did.
Yeah. All right. So, um, Rockman, let's talk about the state of Florida. What grade would you give the state of Florida? I mean, all the stuff, of, of course, we, we, we got our governor here who, who, he, he a little bit crazy too. Um, but I mean, with, with all those, you know, re, redrawing the districts and things like that, what, what is Florida? What, what do we need to look for in Florida?
Um, I'll say, so to answer the first question, I think the grade, I'd give it a C minus to D. And the reason being is, you know, one of the things that I think is most important, diversity is key. Diversity of all places, of all spaces. Um, the legislature is a Republican dominated legislature, right? The, the, you can't have a diversity of thought if you're thinking, I've gotta have a monolithic group. That's gonna think the same way and vote the same way in the legislature. We've got to diversify that legislature. What does that mean? Coming to the table and voting. It doesn't mean just voting. I had to tell this to the party chair. I am a Democrat. I have no problem with that because the majority of Democrats focus on the ideals that I do. But one of the problems I think that we have is that we think just because somebody has a Democrat or Republican behind their name, that they are the right candidate. We've got to focus on recruiting, training and preparing the right candidates for these spaces like being in the Florida House and Senate, right? That's why we have a super majority of Republicans because you have people that are just absolutely, for lack of a better term, and I hope you don't bleep me on this, that shit crazy. And you put them in there like, well, they're a Democrat. You want to have people who are there that are, that are pragmatic, that are listening, that are centrists, that are taking in all the information and then making decisions. So that's one of the things that I have an issue about the state. Um, and then the governor, the governor is way too involved when it comes, especially to issues like the stop woke. Who wants to stop woke?
Yeah.
He does.
Obviously he does.
But DEI is not a bad word. I've done extensive research on diversity, equity and inclusion. And all it simply means is that we have an opportunity. To be at least on a, on a level playing field, which as you well know, due to the, the vestiges of hundreds of years of, uh, former enslavement. And institutionalized racism, you're still dealing and y'all, let me tell you, I deal with it. I see it. And it's less. People coming and walking down the road with a, a hood and a, and a burning cross and a shotgun.
Right, right, right.
Or aggressions.
Oh, yeah.
Implicit bias.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna say, and I'm not racist, but this is how I've always done it. So this is how we need to do it. And that ends up being something that hurts everybody. A lack of diversity doesn't just hurt black folk, it hurts everybody. So that's one of the things I think we need. Now, you also gotta give credit where credit is due. Um, and I must say this quickly. I sent the governor a letter from my office a couple of days ago, or not congratulating him, but thanking him, thanking the governor. And I know some people were like, why would you thank the governor? You gotta give credit where credit is due. Uh, it's not a big thing, but it was a big thing for me. Um, the other day, as you well know, for those of us here in Jacksonville, uh, we lost within the last six months, two people that were very close to my, to me, my family. I'm in my life. One was Denise Lee. Um, Denise Lee was a member of this city council. She was the second longest serving member of the Jacksonville City Council. The other was Senator Betty Hosendorf, who as a black woman, um, was instrumental in re-instituting the Florida A and M University Law School. She put in, uh, she's Edward Waters graduate like myself. She put in, uh, money for, uh, all the black colleges in Florida to get a reoccurring appropriation. She was the first person to do that and made strategic change that we are benefiting from now. When Senator Hosendorf died a few weeks ago, uh, on the day of her funeral, the governor ordered all flags in the state of Florida to be flown at half.
To be flown half, half staffed. I, I saw, I saw that. And that was big.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
So I, I, I had to send him a letter because I believe that that is the right thing to do. Uh, we haven't yet figured out how we're gonna name or, or how we're gonna honor her here in Jacksonville. But I'm working with current Senator Davis, uh, state rep, Kim Daniels, state rep, Angie Nixon, and the entire Duval delegation to see what we can do on both the state and city levels. To do something to commemorate, um, Senator Hosendorf, but also representative and councilwoman Lee. And so when somebody does something, we gotta say, yeah, that's, that's the right thing to do.
Well, I'm glad you brought that to my attention because I'm still, look, him getting rid of DEI in like the, the schools and things like that. So. Okay. You're making me look at him a little bit different, but he's, he's, I'm still looking at him with a side eye, man.
You better side that eye.
I, I want to ask you this, Rockman specifically, because I care, I, I care about all people. However, I know that my people. Are in a dry, desolate place, our mindset. What do we need to know about the voting process? And, and, and what to activate? Um, because I too believe that Democrats, Republican, I'm a Democrat. But I rock with some Republicans because they can get the job done. I know what their purpose, purpose is. So I'm not biased to, like you said. Uh, this person got an R by their name. This person got a, a D by their name. So put in who we, I feel like that's what we do. So I feel like, I feel like that's what we do as a culture. We, we go with the favorite. Talk to me about what do we need to know now?
So here's the thing, one of the things I think that is so important is that we make a plan. And I know it, it may seem pie in the sky. Two things I can say, actually, one is make a plan and two voter, right? You never know election day, what's gonna happen. I remember, um, as, as you all know, I lost my mom a few years ago. My mom passed on transition a few years ago. And even in her sickness, one of the things, and I'm certainly not thinking about council. But as I, my mom was still sick, one of the things that she said, make sure you get my ballot so I can cast it because I don't know what's gonna happen. And, and we've gotta have that. So that means, uh, and she knew what my grandmother went through. You gotta remember, my grandmother was born before women had the right to vote.
Wow.
Just think about that for a minute. I've had conversations with my grandmother. When I ran for office years ago, I had honestly never planned to do it again, right? Just think about that for a minute. I've had conversations with my grandmother. When I ran for office years ago, I had honestly never planned to do it again, right? But when I sat down and talked to my grandmother, I just remember those conversations and I, I'm glad I had those moments, right? Back then, of course, uh, my grandmother passed away in two thousand and five, so we didn't have the proliferation of camera phones and videos, so I don't have many.
Right.
Um, things of her talking, but I remember her telling me how excited her uh mother and, and aunts were to be able to vote. Because that wasn't, they were, they were the children of the formerly enslaved.
Yeah, right.
They were enslaved. Um, that's why when I brought up the doctorate, man, I, when I look back, I can trace my lineage and, and parts of my family from here. I am the great, 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 great grandson of an enslaved girl. We don't know her name. We know she was on a plantation in Virginia. And she, and I say girl, not woman, girl, who was taken by her master.
Mm-hmm.
That's how my line started in America. Now, we're greater than, and I'm sure there was even greater if we knew where it was before we got here. But that little girl, I, I, if you all had seen me at graduation, man, I was a ball of tears because I just can't, obviously, you know, one of the reasons my mom wasn't there. But I was thinking like, how must this little girl have felt being a little girl in a foreign land where she didn't speak the language? And now she's having a baby from a man she don't even know.
Wow.
But, but look at what was and look at what became of it. I, I, it was an awesome responsibility. Every time I walk in this building, I'm in my office, like I said, right now. This building that I sit in is the former, uh, what was it? Make Coins, Ivy Make Coins, I think it was downtown here.
It was Make Co- Make Coins.
Yeah.
The City Hall at St. James. My mother was brought here by my grandmother to buy dresses. They could not come in the front door. My, they had a couple dollars, right? My grandmother was a teacher. They had to bring my mama in the back door at night to spend the same money to buy the dresses that white folk would buy.
Wow, I didn't know that. I didn't know that. I didn't know that segregation occurred even in, we, we know waiting rooms or restaurants, definitely, but even to buy clothing?
To buy clothing. You could not shop, even though it's the same dress and there.
I can't even come in the daytime.
Nope. You had to come at night and enter the back door.
And in the back door.
And it is, it is visited on me every time I walk into this space.
Yeah.
And I am in this place where there's only nineteen or eighteen other people who are able to move legislation in the same way, who are able to make change and, and, and set stuff. I walk in the front door and they say, good morning, councilman.
Wow.
And I, I am just so thankful for this opportunity because, you know, who would, could my mother have even thought? And, and, and maybe they did it, but for me, that's why I'm at other districts that are not just my own. It is an off responsibility to be able to say, we took the thing that was mess, kinda like, you know, African Americans, and Gene, you said it right, it's about black folk for me. I'm, I may not live in a traditional black district, but at the end of the day, I have a black man through and through. And Gene, you up on the, uh, uh, Fortified Street, what is that, uh, Cleveland Road at the Y, where we was going, uh, Summer Camp? We all got stories, and you know we got the stories.
Yeah.
Tell you, when I, I'm on the council, yes, I'm a council member, yes, my, my, my district members know that I fight hard for District fourteen, but I am also very keenly aware of the fact that I'm a black man, and there are certain things that I must champion.
Yeah.
Gene, if I got, if I could tell you two things real quick, make a plan, vote early, go to duvalelections.com, get your mail ballot now. I put in an appropriation very quickly for eighty-five thousand dollars. I'm gonna be working with the, and eighty-five thousand may not seem like much, but what I did is carved out eighty-five grand just to focus on getting people to the polls using non-traditional methods, right? So going on social, uh, making sure that we're using IP address targeting and those non-traditional methods of media, because TV commercials ain't gonna get the people to the polls that we need to get to the polls.
Yeah.
No.
No, no one's reading the newspaper in the way that they did, but they are going on Instagram, they are on Twitter, and, and they are on.
TikTok.
And TikTok, exactly. So I put those funds to the side to focus on getting people out. But go make a plan to vote in the best and easiest way, duvalelections.com. You could just register right then, and your ballot will be in your mailbox.
Wow.
Nice.
You know what? Go ahead.
You, you talked about um ballot in your mailbox, but if I get the ballot in my mailbox, can I still change my mind and go vote at the polls?
Yes, you can. If you decide.
Okay.
Election day, they will just, because they have not the, the ballots, or excuse me, the, the tabulation systems at the polls are not in any way connected to the internet. Trust me, I've been fiercely working with, you know, checking behind the supervisor, which I think Jerry Hollis is doing a really great job. The ballots, um, but the, the system that decides if you are a voter or not, when they look up, that is connected to the internet, so real time. Let's say you've sent in your ballot, but you wanna vote there, it, it will say, no, you can't double vote in that way.
Okay.
So we don't protect that. Um, my thought, though, is just, it's a lot easier to do. Uh, the only issue, get this now, it used to be, because too many of y'all was voting. Too many, I'm gonna be honest, too many of y'all was voting, right? And y'all have figured the system out. So you could go on, register to get your ballot, and then the ballot would come to you um in the mailbox, right? And you could say, I wanted it to come to me for the next five elections or so. Well, what Republicans notice that y'all were getting wise and saying, cool, I don't have to go and stop my life, I can still vote. Because of that, you then end up turning around where uh they made a law in the Florida Legislature to, to wash the entire voter roll. And now each election, you have to go on and request a ballot.
That's crazy.
I know.
That is crazy.
And that's why.
Are we wrong to feel like they try to block us at every turn?
You're not wrong, because it's more people. That's one of the reasons we end up now with a congressional district. Uh, we have, black people in this city are disenfranchised. We are disenfranchised in the state, in, in, especially in North Florida. We have, they couldn't attack Orlando, too many of us in Orlando, too many of us in Miami, so they came where they could, which was Jacksonville. So our district used to stretch from Duval County up to Leon County and pick up those in between. And the other part of that is what they would do, because you have to have certain amounts of population, they would pick up the prisons. So you get the population, but the population can't do what? Can't vote.
They can't vote, yeah.
So you, you, you can get those numbers right. What we ended up doing and what it kinda, how they, they made a district that pulled together the entire contiguous city of Jacksonville. Because of that, the reason they did it is because what? Jacksonville usually votes Republican.
Yeah.
So now you have a safe Republican seat. And even when the legislature said, well, that's probably not fair. Let's redraw the districts. So they redrew it so it could at least have some power. The governor vetoed it and said, no, we want this district that's gonna keep a Republican seat.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I don't even get and understand that. Like, at the end of the day, you got the power, you in the governor's mansion, you got the super majority of the legislature, now you just wanna be evil.
Now, Rockman.
That asshole. I say it, I say it, you just wanna be an ass.
But, but answer this, I think, and, and this is what my take, when they, when they start doing all that, was that to stop Corinne Brown?
Honestly, yes.
Redraw, redrawing her, her district or the district that kinda affected her, because of course, she had been there for a long time.
Yes.
She was a power hitter, so they're like, oh, we got, we got that. What, what, what can we do to stop?
To stop her.
Well, not just Corinne, though, but it was, and Corinne, absolutely, because Corinne was kinda, I just watched the movie Shirley, uh, if you haven't seen it on.
Yeah, I thought it, I thought it this week.
And you guys know, my, my, I'm a member of SAG-AFTRA, so I'm an actor, and I'm, I'm, you know, part of that acting community of Regina.
Hey, we gonna get into that too, Rockman, don't worry about it.
I'm still a working actor. Uh, Regina, I love her. Uh, my heart continues to go out to her because uh.
The loss of her son.
Yes, I woke up that morning and I saw, and I wrote a poem, and it, it kinda went viral, because I, I just shared it, it was so touching to me. But anyway, Regina, when I tell you she was Shirley Chisholm, she was Shirley.
Yes, she was.
But I, I looked at, you know, Corinne may not be the same way, but she's certainly unbothered and unbossed. And they were trying every way they could to take her out.
Yeah.
And even after she was defeated by Congressman Lawson, there was still a, well, we want that seat. So it wasn't even just Corinne. Think about it. Corinne lost to Congressman Lawson, right? So if it was just about Corinne, they would've left the seat alone. They then went after the seat itself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're right. You're right.
Yep.
Um, yeah.
Wait, before we go anywhere, can I please say something about Shirley Chisholm?
Yes.
What about Shirley?
My mother and so many members of my family are US citizens today because of the message that Shirley Chisholm gave back in, I don't know, the late sixties, early seventies or whatever. She was speaking to the West Indian community in New York. And she said, so many of you are coming to me and you want me to help you. I cannot help you if you are not a citizen. So her saying that drove a lot of West Indians, Caribbean people, to go through the citizenship process. So that, guess what? We vote and it affects us, it benefits us. All of that is one in the same. And I'm here to say, because I grew up here and my mother talked about it, that if it wasn't for Shirley Chisholm putting out her campaign, so to speak, was speaking to the West Indians, saying, hey, listen, you guys have to become citizens and you have to be able to vote.
I'm telling you, Chisholm was, I got a chance, I didn't, obviously, I wasn't around when she was running for office, but um, a lot of people don't know this, when she retired, she moved to Palm Coast.
Really?
That's what.
Because that's where a whole bunch of West Indians are, but I'm depressed.
There you, seriously, she moves to Palm Coast, I got a chance to spend some amazing time with this woman that, you know, I, I almost feel Forrest Gumpian in a way. Like, I've had, so if I tell you some of the people I've met in my life and the stories and the, the people I've been around, like, I was looking through some pictures the other day, pictures with Desmond Tutu, pictures with Maya Angelou, people that I was just around because of my family. Um, and, and Congresswoman Chisholm was one of them. And just sitting and speaking to her, um, I remember we had gotten her to come to speak at one of the Urban League luncheons here. And she asked me to introduce her on stage, and it was the honor of my life. I honestly didn't realize at the time, I was young, I was like, oh, yeah, you know, Miss Chisholm, yes. And I gave this introduction. As I look back on it, I introduced Shirley Chisholm.
Yeah.
That was history.
I was running around.
That's a big thing.
With Desmond Tutu.
That's big.
Cracking jokes with each other, like this man, and I was looking at me introducing him and, and it, we, it was like, this was, I'm just so thankful. I could not be more, just, I'm so full of gratitude for this moment, but as it goes back to what I said in the beginning, I believe that God allowed me to have all of those experiences, meet all those folk, just, just baking a cake, just baking a cake. I'm gonna throw in some of this, so when it gets to the point that the cake needs to be made.
Yeah.
It tastes real good.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah. And that's the, that's the bu- that's the beauty of God, too, Rockman, because you didn't know he was making a cake.
Yep.
You, you thought it was grits.
I did, I did.
I hope not the ones that I had this morning, though, because they was horrible.
Grits, grits from where, Gene?
Yeah, where did you go? Where?
Look, hey, Rockman, before you came on the phone, we were talking about it, because of course, you know, Crystal's got a good breakfast, especially the one on US One in Edgewood.
There it is.
Um, but Gene said he went up there and got the, what's the, where you get the little grits and, and the little.
Scrambler.
Yeah, the bacon scrambler, listen. Hey, I got it, too. I'm gonna walk the dog for you, don't worry about it. Listen, Rockman, they got grandmama in there back in the day. Remember, remember when grandmama used to be back there cooking?
I know it.
You had, you, you had Auntie Brenda with her Crystal's uniform on, Auntie Brenda fine, right there.
You gotta tell me.
They got, yeah, listen, they got Young Miami in there cooking now. She twerking on Instagram, that's why the grits, that's why the grits. Because she, she, she like this. The grits, the grits ain't getting cooked, the grits ain't getting cooked.
I need you to have that little piece, you know, that little piece that hang right there.
Yeah, yeah.
You ain't got that.
You ain't got that, you ain't, get out the kitchen.
And you got to walk slow. You can't walk fast with them, them rubber shoes. They got about that much of a heel that's a block. And they, because they can't move too fast, because they just, it rub when they walk, it's rubbed, you know what I'm saying? You let me by, you let me by.
I let you by.
That is what, and if I see, and that thing hang.
You know that's good.
That food good, that food good.
Y'all crazy. Y'all, y'all are crazy.
Hey, man.
Rockman.
No, Gene, Gene said his whole breakfast this morning was fucked up.
Was trash.
I, I get it. I get, it's, it's so funny, you bring up Young Miami and Karisha and all, you know. And I thought back in the day, like, I was like, you know, some stuff, man, this is be some, I, I was like.
Yeah.
Are you surprised that, that this stuff is, is acceptable?
They make Luke, they make Uncle Luke look like a pastor for real.
Huh? Eating some grits, that's all she eat, and that's all we eat is grits. They eat a whole bunch of other stuff and all kinds of. And I, I guess I'm finally into the fact that I'm, you know, the age that I am.
We're older.
Huh?
Rockman, you.
That we're older.
We're older.
Because I feel, I feel, yeah, we're out of the demo, but I don't feel that way. I don't feel like Gene is out of the demo, chill, or you. I feel like we still cool, we're cool as hell. We are, I'm here to tell you, we're out of the demo. We're out of the demo.
We're out of the demo. I don't understand, I don't understand it.
I listened to a Kevin Gates interview the other day, and by the end of it, I was like.
What did he even say? Or you felt, you felt like.
No, I know how he felt.
You felt dirty. Tell, tell them.
I felt.
You felt dirty.
I watched, I watched all of this.
Yes.
Like I needed a bath, and then additionally, I'm, where my other mind went, because at this age, I'm, I'm not married now, so of course, you know, I've, I've been on the occasional date. I will tell you that I'm not interested in, because for whatever reason, you guys know this, the single guys, uh, Gene, you're out of that demographic now.
Yeah, y'all not in there. Hey, hey, Rock, hey, Rockman, it's all on you now, brother.
For the single brothers, it seems like the older we get and the grayer we get, the younger we attract, wouldn't you say?
It, it, that happens. Yep.
So I'm in this space, and I'm hearing Kevin Gates talking about all this, and I'm hearing Karisha and JT, and I, in my mind, I'm like, that seemed real tiring, like.
We don't, we don't have that kinda energy. We too old for that. I don't have that kinda energy. I really do not, okay? I go to bed early, like, mm-mm, I don't, I don't.
I listened to it, and they was like, oh, I spin around and do all this. I'm like, you know, I gotta go to the gym in the morning, I need to, you know, I should.
Thank you. You have real shit to do. No, 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 we're good.
Yeah, we are out the demo. But, hey, Rockman, once again, we, our hats off to you because, um, of course, radio DJ, uh, you were the first black Ron Burgundy, um, TV.
That's the fact.
Professor, um, TV host.
Yes.
Look, look, a, a couple of episodes ago, we talked about this whole Nickelodeon thing. You were employed by Nickelodeon, you were a daily host, you had your TV show on there. Did you see any of that Tom Foolery shenanigans going on at Nickelodeon when you were there?
Let me tell you why, kinda similar to what Keenan was saying, um, we was grown, but there's certain, speaking of demographic, there's certain demographics of folk that you just ain't gonna try certain things with.
Then you go, hit the bell, hit the bell, chill, hit the dog bell.
They ain't come up, so I didn't see.
Why do they, why do they put that black boy off the show? His mama was too involved.
I saw that. I was an adult.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, even though I was young, I was an adult. I was the first, so I'm told, I was the first African-American host of, um, of network programming on Nickelodeon, which was at the time, number one network in the country, and I was around the world, I was Nick UK, you know, doing stuff with Nick. I never saw any of that. I knew, but you gotta realize, too, a lot of these scripted shows were shot in other places. Sometimes they were shot on location in other plots, other spots. I watched the documentary. I thought, I was like, whoa, it was a lot. But there are some people who, and, and we all know this, and especially in radio.
Hmm.
Now, we all got some friends, I ain't gonna say no names, but we know some folk. And they figure that they will do whatever to get whatever.
Mm-hmm.
There are some of us who are not gonna do that. And I don't have to be.
That, that's true. Remember, you just said, uh, uh, to the effect that people know who to try. So the, the person that, you know, we've all worked with, they know who to do the debauchery in front of and who not to do it in front of. Because I'm gonna let you know, my mama, mm-mm, don't do it in front of me, because I'm telling.
You gonna get snatched.
Yeah.
Just like what you said earlier about the former president saying, you know, grab him, whatever.
Right.
He knew not to, now, come on. Now, can you imagine him saying something like that to Corinne Brown?
Nope.
No.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. Okay, let's say, you might think Corinne may not be his feet, right?
That's a perfect, that's a perfect example.
Could you imagine him saying, I'm, I'm gonna make this up, can you imagine him saying it? She's, she's older, she's a little different looking. she's older. She's a little different looking. Maxine Waters. Come here, I'm a. Could you imagine? What you might say, okay, Maxine's a little older. He may not be in the older. He in the younger. That's fine. That's fine. There are certain chicks who may not be famous. But could you imagine him going up to a sister?
Especially not Jess Hilarious.
Oh.
Hit the bell for that.
It could be pregnant, Jess. Jess will gut stop.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. Jess.
You're not gonna disrespect us like that. You're not gonna, and we have to view it as that. It is a form of disrespect. And here's my thing on that particular comment that he made, that didn't have anything to do with color. Every woman, every woman should have been insulted and offended when you heard that. It don't matter what color, race, ethnicity you are. We all as women should have been offended by somebody, uh, uh, saying that that was okay.
If you got a daughter, if you got a mama, because y'all gotta have a mama to come here. If you got a daughter.
Yep.
Any, any connected to a woman in any way, you should also be offended. Because it, and, and then for them to dismiss it saying, oh, that's just locker room talk. I'm in the.
No, it's not.
Don't talk like that in locker room. Not in my locker room. Don't talk like that.
And then, and what, and what makes me madder about that too, you know, he was talking to Billy Bush.
Right.
That's who he was talking to. So they pulled Billy Bush off the air for like a year, but he's still back on doing it. I mean, it's the same thing. Like, like it never even happened.
And laughed at it. Like, I'm just.
Yeah, which is crazy to me.
And, and I'm not just gonna put it on him. Like, y'all know, it's a lot going on with, um, and, and, you know, I don't know, I'm not gonna cast dispersions of judge. I mean, we all have our, um, I too have watched the Jaguar write interviews and then chuckled and laughed. And, 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 uh, but you know, I'm still a part of the crew. I'm still hip hop. I don't know what Diddy did. You know, I, I'm honest. I've been to a Diddy party or two. I ain't stayed at the end, like after everybody left, like I ain't gonna stay there. You know what I'm saying? I don't know. I've been to many parties that, that celebrities have had, but when I finished, I went home. You know, I went away. I went back to the hotel, wherever I was. I've been to parties at Magic Johnson's house. I've been to parties like that. So I'll tell you, I don't know what went on. Um, but there are some people that I'm learning. And this is, this is, I'm, I'm taking it away. I don't know what happened. And I'm not gonna try to, to, to even think about what happened. Cause that, I'm not gonna take anything away from somebody who believes that they're wrong. But what I will tell you is that there are people who believe that, and, and who will do anything to get to a certain place.
Yep.
And my belief, my understanding, my knowing is that I am where I'm supposed to be. And I don't have to do anything and say anything. And I'll be honest with you. Um, I had a situation when I was coming into Greetham where I got tried. It wasn't for me to go and say so and so said this, or so and so said that. I simply said to the individual, if this what I got to do to get this, I guess I won't have this.
Yeah.
Because I knew who I was. I knew who I was. And I don't, I think we gotta get a better self esteem. And I think anybody who was gonna say, oh, this person did this to me and did that to me. You have a choice. Say, I'm not doing that.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm not gonna be in this space. To stay here. So you can even say, oh, I was around when this thing happened. And I think we gotta instill in our kids, um, and, and unfortunately, it's generational. I know I sound old, but it's generational. It's, it's, there's no shortcut.
No.
Wait, put in the work. Do the time.
I just posted that yesterday.
You gotta put in the work.
Yesterday. You cannot be, in order to be an overnight success, you have to be an everyday hustler, period.
Come on, brother. Come on. I remember old Professor Edward Waters, she said, vinegar, a cucumber and a little bit of salt does not a pickle make.
It takes a long time.
Takes time to make the pickle.
Yes. Yes.
You can't sit there. You can't sit there and think that I could just pour some vinegar on a cucumber. All of a sudden it becomes a pickle. No, but that's what this group thinks. They think there is a way around it. So if I do this thing, if I compromise my integrity, if I do this, doesn't necessarily mean that this is me. But if I do this thing, I can just kind of now say, well, I, I don't, I, I, I'll move forward when I get past that. Right? It's almost like I heard, was it Jamie Foxx or somebody was telling a joke? And they was like, if somebody do such and such, and they just say they could pay me a million dollars, I'll just buy me some new lips. You know what? It doesn't work like that. It was, it was a joke. But it doesn't work like that, right?
No, it don't.
That's one of the reasons why here on council, if I do something that is not proper, which I, I'm not purposefully doing that because I gotta sleep with me at night. And I know who I am and I'm not gonna wake up with my mama standing at the foot of my bed, shaking her head. You know what I'm saying? Grabbing at me.
Right.
I'm, I'm more, my, I'm, I'm, I, I having an African American mom who had to have those moments with me when I needed it.
Right. Yeah.
Right. I'll tell you, when my mother passed, I live in my mom's home now. I took it because I moved in with her. Uh, I sold my house and moved in with her when, when she got, you know, developed cancer. And it was funny. My mom, um, when she passed, I did not go in her room. I didn't use the master bedroom for about six months. Cause I know my mama didn't like people in her room. And I was like, when she, nothing to be in her room. And she decided to come back and I'm in her room.
Even though she's gone.
But it was that kind of.
Right away.
Respect. It was that kind of respect.
After six months, I said, well, I guess she's probably not coming back. Yeah, but, but we gotta have that. We gotta instill that in our kids and, and let them know that their esteem is, um, you know.
It's important.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Well.
Rockman, we know, we know you busy, man. We thank you for your time, brother.
Exactly.
How you laid it out, how you laid it down for?
I wanna tell you this real quick. We had some really good accomplishments too, man. Um, there's more to come, but we were able to put, as you know, um, the film and TV industry is, is my industry. I put aside a half million dollars for the industry. Um, and we've got some, some major film and TV projects on the way. What that half million dollars does is incentive programs. Um, I've been meeting with producers, folk I know in the industry to bring that in. So that's another part of not just economic development, but there's some amazing talent here. Um, so that's something that's really cool. I'll be sending out to you. I just partnered with the, uh, a, as an actor, I kind of took some time off to do this, but I feel like I've kind of hit my stride. Um, so I've just finished a, um, a volunteer project that I did this close to me with the Center for Disease Control and Prevention that is running nationally now called Strangers with Colon's. Um, I had my first colonoscopy last year, which is so very important.
Okay, very important.
As we know, Chad, Chadwick Boseman was only forty-three when he died from colorectal cancer. And so, um, with their urging, especially African Americans, to go get tested and get screened. Uh, so I, I'm looking forward. I'll be sending information out, um, about that. So I hope you'll share it with, with everybody.
Well, listen, we absolutely will because guess what? Everybody on this panel has now had a colonoscopy.
Rockman, they gave you some of that Prophylol. You had some of that milk, man?
I had that milk, baby. I was, I was like, ooh. And wait a minute. So, and you know, I had never been under. I've never had surgery, never been under.
Me neither.
Right?
Me neither. I was, hey, listen, that's the same thing with me, Rock. I had never been under. I was afraid.
So you know Gerald, you know Gerald Butler? Remember Gerald from Reigns? Gerald Butler graduated in ninety-four with me. So it was a year, year behind you. But Gerald is, uh, my frat brother. We've been best friends since kindergarten. So Gerald and his wife would take me to get the procedure. Well, y'all know I like to eat pretty healthy. And so I, you know, pride myself going to the gym and eating healthy and all that. So I don't remember anything after going down. I, I don't remember nothing for the next day or two, right? So, so Gerald called me the day after and said, hey, man, you good? I said, man, I'm hungry. I didn't eat all day. He was like, yes, you did. I'm like, no, no. He said, you asked me to stop by Popeyes and get you three piece spicy all thighs. And he said, you gobbled it up like it was. And I'm like, no, I don't eat fried chicken like that. Like once a year. He's like, well, you ate it yesterday.
You ate it today.
So.
You still gragging.
Yeah.
But I, I, I'm so excited that, that this series is, is national and that we're using, um, this to, to move that forward. So that's coming out. And, um, as far as the things we're going here with the city, um, there's a few naming projects. I'm gonna share this with you. It is not public yet. Um, but if you ride by the street, you'll see it. I've got several projects I could share with you, but this one is probably the most important to me. Uh, I was reading Ray Charles' autobiography. Uh, you know, Ray Charles lived here for a time. And I like to read. And so I was reading his autobiography and it literally listed the address where he lived. And he talked about how much fun and how mu- how he grew so much living in Jacksonville. And so for kicks, I put it in my GPS. I get there and the, the house is not there, but it was this place. And I just stood there. And I felt like I connected with Ray Charles. The beauty of that moment is, uh, I was able to work with city attorneys, with Ray Charles' estate, with his record company and catalog. Uh, we were able to name the street where Ray Charles lived. It is now called Ray Charles Place.
Nice.
In the Villa area?
Wow.
It's the street that deadens at La Villa School of the Arts.
Okay.
So, okay. I haven't announced it like majorly, but I went and just stood there the other day. I'm gonna send you a picture. I stood there at the sign. And it, it was like a moment, man, because I haven't done like the, the press thing because I want to, I'm working on now trying to get Jamie Foxx to come in as we do the official unveiling. So I'll let you.
Oh, that'd be dope.
I would love to have him on the show and, and you talk.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Maybe, maybe we could do, maybe we could do something live on that day.
Right.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it. But to, to be in that spot and see this, you know, there are things that we are, I'm working now on another piece of legislation, um, that you may not know. Um, and this is a story I didn't know until I got here and started doing more reading. So you got Ray Charles Place. Um, the, in eighteen eighty-five, there was a black man who was a part of what was called the Volunteer Fire Department here in Jacksonville. This black man, um, was, he went to fight a fire. Well, there wasn't a, an official fire department. Well, when he got there, he tried to fight it. The building fell on it. He died. Uh, they buried him. This was in eighteen eighty-five. They buried him in an, Henry Riggins, I think is his name. Uh, they buried him in an unmarked grave in the Old City Cemetery where blacks were over to the side. So we don't know exactly where he's buried. We just know he's buried there. Before I got on council, uh, he is, his name is enshrined as the first fireman to die because the next year, insurance companies went to the then Jacksonville City Council and said, look, we are not gonna insure. And mind you, this is before the great fire of nineteen oh one. They said, we are not gonna insure anything in the city unless you all have a fire department. And back in the eighteen eighties, it was like a new thing. And, you know, we're just over the Civil War. Long story short, um, last year, they were able to, to put things in and they have a marker at the Old City Cemetery for him. But who among us goes to the Old City Cemetery?
Yeah.
It's mostly Confederate soldiers that were passed on and people in that space. What I've done is I'm working now. It's not official yet, but I'm pulling together all the information. Um, our fire and rescue department here, I'm working to have that building named for that man because his death is what created what we now know as the Jacksonville Fire and Rescue Department. So I've got some. Money for the Greeks, those renaming things. We're, we're doing the work.
All right. All right. Well, Rockman, we appreciate the work you're doing. We appreciate you coming.
And we're, we're here to support you.
Yeah.
In any way, because I feel like it is necessary for us. We talked about the primary election. Most people don't think about that. I want to do a little bit more this year than I've done previously or any other year. I wanna focus on that. I want people to realize what is on the ballot to vote. We've got to first start with the primary election. Am I right?
You're absolutely right.
Okay. So chill, that's, that's our focus. We want to be a part of the community that we live in. Like you said, we do all till we die.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And that doesn't just pertain to the Jaguars. That pertains to other parts and other areas of the city. So.
Jaguars. We're not just giving a billion dollars. People think we're just giving a billion dollars to a billionaire. Um, the, the stadium is owned by you. You own the stadium. I own the stadium. It's owned by us. I'm not, people are like, well, why don't you just sell the stadium? You wanna sell one of your most valuable assets?
Yeah.
No.
Buy the stadium again. If you've sold it, you got a riverfront stadium. They don't have, they don't make those. So we don't do the work that it takes to do the stadium. As long as we don't raise taxes, I'm okay with us doing the renovations to make that stadium world class. So we end up with a, a multi-billion dollar economic generator over the next ten years.
Yeah.
Rockman, let me ask you this. The, the, the newness of downtown, the infrastructure that they're, they're, they're putting in with that. What's the timeline?
It's probably gonna be about another three years. As you know, the city of Jacksonville just got, and I'm really grateful for this, a hundred and forty-seven million dollar grant from the Biden administration. It's real good to have friends in the White House, right? And in Congress. Hundred and forty-seven million dollars. Um, it goes into the Emerald Trail, which is gonna run over there by Will, your dad's church, my property where my grandmother was. All of those areas, it's gonna connect in downtown. Uh, I've been a huge part of the La Villa Heritage District. Uh, I, I sat on this committee before I was elected. Now I've been able to appropriate some funds. Um, we're gonna do, you'll see, uh, the La Villa Gateway Project come about where La Villa is going to be highlighted. I say that because it's really important that we understand the African American contribution to this city. But downtown is growing. Um, there's more people coming down. There's, I just looked at, uh, two loft projects that are coming. I really like lofts. Uh, so I saw two amazing loft projects that are on the way. Uh, there's this Pearl Street Quarter Project, Lower Street Trio. Uh, there's gonna be the new soccer stadium, the southeast. I mean, there's a lot and all that's gonna connect to downtown. And downtown has a, I have a really great partner on this council in Jimmy Peluso. Uh, the interesting part is, uh, District Seven, which is now what downtown is a part of, runs from Springfield, picks up the stadium and it runs through downtown and then goes to Avondale, Riverside, and then Ortega, right? My, butts up against that and goes to, goes south to the Clay County line. But the thing is, they also included Springfield parts of the African American areas, um, Newtown and Edward Waters, part of that District Seven, Durkiville. The reason I bring that up is because those areas don't fit. You can't compare, uh, uh, what is that? Uh, Ortega to Durkiville. It just.
No, you can't.
Right? But I have a great partner on the council in Jimmy Peluso because Councilman Peluso is really committed. He's just a good guy. And he is, uh, you know, really committed to doing the work. And so even though, uh, Durkiville is a very small part of his district and Edward Waters and other areas, uh, when I have said, hey, Jimmy, not on legislation, I just wanna show you Edward Waters, right? All I had to do was ask. He jumped in the car and went to an Edward Waters basketball game with me. And, and that's, that's a big thing. You know, my grandma, I went to Edward Waters. My grandmother graduated from that school in nineteen, 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 twenty. And so that's why.
Bull's mom graduated from, from EWC.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Listen, in her yearbook, she's listed as part of like the foreign exchange student program because again, my mother's from Jamaica. It was only her and three other people. It was four people in the club. The foreign club is what they were. But listen, my mom is in there. We have the, um, the yearbooks to prove it. And the, the family, cause you know, that's how family do. They have never let it, let my mama forget.
That's right.
It's now, um, Edward Waters.
University. University. It's E W U.
Right. No, no. It's always done E, E, EWC. For me, it's gonna be EWC. But yes, we have talked about EWC for the ten years we've been doing this podcast. Have we not?
Yes, we have. And Rockman dig this. I think her mom was the first cap of Sweetheart. Don't miss that.
I see you, sweet. I see you, sweet.
Get me on Ms. Claudia. Ms. Claudia.
You gotta do this again. Let's stay in.
Yes.
Yeah. Man, I love, when I say this and I mean this, I love everybody on this show. Y'all are my family. I've known you, like I said, for, for decades. I, please keep me in prayer. Like your positive thoughts and prayers. This ain't easy. And all that we do behind the scenes, you don't see it. And sometimes I am just sitting here with my head in my hands like, what the hell? But when I walk out of that door, I make sure that I'm representing you. My head is hell high. I'm doing things integrous. And I make sure that even if I have an issue, I do it with class. Even though if somebody comes to me with garbage, I'm gonna meet them with class. So you gonna look, as my grandmama would tell me, if you arguing with the fool when somebody pass by, they can't tell.
They don't know. They can't tip, they can't tell the difference.
That's right.
They can't tell the difference. Rockman, I can, I, I don't know what was going on the other day, but I could tell it was a big win when you and your partner had the dance routine. I'm like, oh, they, I'm like, I don't know. I don't know what they just tackled. But boy, they got that dance routine. I don't know who asked. They just.
But that was a celebration dance.
But that was a celebration outside of City Hall.
Look, we, I'm gonna tell you, I am.
They don't hit the bell.
I'm not traditional. I, I, the Tschwalabomb.
Rockman, we do not want you to be traditional because guess what? We all had to change with the times.
Yep.
What, the, the way that elections were back in the day, like, I, I'll just say this. We started out talking about this. My mom is just a Democrat. She run, this is what she said. This is her quote. What, the, the way that elections were back in the day, like I, I'll just say this, we started out talking about this. My mom is just a Democrat. She run, this is what she says. This is her quote. I run a straight Democratic ticket. She don't care. She's not doing the research. She is just
Yep.
I get it. I
That's a lot of power voters though. That's a lot of super voters and we have to, we have to acknowledge that. Not only do we have to engage our young voting audience, because thank God for Jimmy Johnson, Rains Principal Longest Standing. I know, uh, I, I, I know, I know where you lay. Rockman, I get it. I know you thirty-seven oh one, but the one thing that I can appreciate about Jimmy A. Johnson, when we were eighteen, when, when we were seniors, he registered all seniors to vote.
Yes, he did.
And, and he registered all seniors to vote. And by the time you turn eighteen, when you were ready to graduate, you were ready to vote. I've voted ever since I was eighteen years old. It becomes a
It was
You, you understand the responsibility from it, but you also have to be educated on how to.
It was a rite of passage, Jimmy. I mean, even though
Okay, so watch this. Watch this. Rockman, what's the first year that you voted?
Nineteen ninety-four.
Just got, he had just graduated.
Just graduated. Yep. Yep.
But my first vote was nineteen ninety-two.
Wow.
And I voted, my first vote was for, for Clinton.
I love it.
And guess what? My middle son, he turned eighteen last year, but this year will be his first, you know, uh, major election.
Major election.
And all that. But listen, it's important in my household for us to talk about that. My mother has talked about it for generations or for years. So I have to continue. We have to keep talking about this. Don't let the young people think that voting, oh, it doesn't even really matter and oh, it's all rigged. Listen, there's a thousand conspiracy theories out there, but this is about something different. Let's teach our young people that we didn't always have this opportunity to vote.
And like Mr. Johnson, uh, you know, I gotta say, I, I, I did my, I'm obviously blue and white to the, you know, John Rebalcy in high school. But interestingly enough, and I made the joke, my mom went to Rains. Uh, but the funny part is I was in all AP classes and the way it worked, we took, I took my morning AP classes at Reball. But my afternoon AP classes with Miss Tunstall and those other folk were at Rains.
At Rains.
And so we would switch. So my, the Rains AP students who took the morning AP class at Rains would go to their afternoon AP classes at Reball. So we have a running joke because we, you know, we all, it's all family.
We family. Yeah.
And it's until that weekend, November, we good.
That's it. We good. And, 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 and Rockman, I saw you on the sideline at First Coast. I said, you know what? I'm not even gonna bother.
You, you can't
I'm not even gonna bother. I'm not even gonna bother.
Sure that we remember all of those folk. I will tell you, you, Mr. Johnson registered you. I was registered by a man and he would come to Rains to Lloyd Pearson. So Rutledge Pearson, who the school is named for, um, that used to be shared with Forrest, uh, sixth grade center.
Right, right, right.
His brother Lloyd Pearson, who ironically I just, uh, I have his picture on my Facebook page. Um, he died, uh, in December at the age of a hundred three. Um, he is, is the one, he was a very quiet man, very soft spoken. He spent most of his life as a letter carrier. Mr. Pearson came and sat in the cafeteria at Reball at seventeen and a half, which is when you can officially register. He sat there and registered us. That's how I got registered to vote. And so I had the great opportunity. I was the, uh, emcee. I still do some entertainment stuff. I try to, you know, do as much as I can get in the schedule, but I was the emcee for the NAACP, uh, Freedom Fund Luncheon in November last year, so October, November, November last, yes, November. Mr. Pearson was there. And I had just defended my dissertation, gotten the doctorate, had been elected to office, all in this space. And I went and sat with him. There's a wonderful picture of me sitting with him and I let him know that I'm the product of you. And so I, I got, and he was in his right mind. He was like, yeah, he said
It's about chill.
It was a moment. It was, and for me to be able to tell him, thank you, having achieved some things.
I feel that.
I am in the process right now of just introducing some legislation. As many of you know, uh, letter carriers are under attack, uh, in many ways in this country. Uh, we've had, uh, some unfortunate incidents in my district and other places. I've just introduced legislation to support national legislation that will, um, strengthen the laws that if you attack a letter carrier, you will go to prison and you will have, uh, heavier fines against you. Uh, there's a seven billion dollar
As it should be.
Yeah.
Right. Like I don't even know what's going on.
Well, there's a seven billion dollar bill in, and my thing is like, why are you attacking the letter carriers?
Right. They don't got nothing to do with your mail, man. They just, they ain't got nothing to do with it. They just bringing it to you.
But they're attacking them and taking like even the, like there's a, a, a infrastructure hardening bill for seven billion dollars right now in Congress, like over, I think it's six, seven years that you, they would harden them, make sure that their mailboxes are digital, things like that. But here's my thing, man. I'm not saying that it's right, but back in the day, there was like checks coming in the mail. Don't nobody send no checks like that no more.
Yeah, it don't even happen like that. Yep.
So, uh, but I'm proud that I just introduced that legislation. It looks like it's gonna pass and I'm doing that in honor of, uh, to support, uh, protecting our letter carriers. And so we're gonna be working to make sure that JSO and other law enforcement agencies, uh, FDLE and others are doing their part to, until that federal legislation comes about, uh, to step up to the plate so we can protect those people that are doing that last kind of vestige of there's some people that still write letters. And you know what? As long as we can protect it, we should.
Absolutely. I agree. And thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. My boy got his boots on the ground. That's real work right now.
Yeah. Yeah. Rockman, we appreciate it, man. We appreciate it. We know you got stuff to do. Um, go ahead and, um, get your work done and lean back in your, in your cream chair.
Do you do realize, I gotta tell you this real quick, man. You realize I, I, I'm such a nerd. I'm always researching. Remember, you're saying some people, especially young folk, like my, come here, Chase. I want him to see you. Come here a minute. So Chase, I gotta ask him this on camera. Do you know what rich Corinthian leather is? No. Okay. So let me tell you this. Remember, remember when, and Chase was, he just graduated. Let's give him a, can we ring the bell for him? He just graduated.
Yeah.
Edward Waters.
He was one of my journalism students. Uh, he's an amazing writer. He's with me for years and now, you know, he's my chief of staff here. But, so you've never heard of rich, rich Corinthian leather, right?
No.
So Ricardo Muzelbaum would say, he, there was a commercial for, what was that car y'all back in the seventies? Was it the Ugo or something? But he had this voice and he would say, uh, this is the car with the rich Corinthian leather. So everybody wanted a car with rich Corinthian leather. There is no such thing as rich Corinthian leather. Oh, my God.
It sounded good.
It sounded, and so there was this research done. They found that there is no such thing, but everybody was buying the car.
But it sounds elegant though.
So now we have this white rich Corinthian leather.
Oh, no. It's cream. It's cream. Remember, it's cream.
That's right. That's it. Crimson and cream. You see it.
Crimson and cream. Crimson and cream. Don't mess that up.
Head to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, thank you. Rockman, appreciate it.
Thank you, Rock.
Thank you, brothers.
Man, oh, man. Look
Listen, I appreciate being able to call a political official
Yes.
at the drop of a dime, be able to ask the questions that we wanna ask about our local community.
Yes.
We got somebody on speed dial and he know people in places.
Yes, he does.
Bug, I, I still think, you know, we're on the road now. We had Rockman this week. Bug, can you, can you, I'm gonna come on the, come on the podcast, please. We need to talk to you.
Like you really, Bug, you really bugging about that. I don't know what the problem is, but y'all work that shit out, man. Get moms on, get moms that, wait, hold on, hold on. Are those Easter eggs still in the back?
Hey, it was only like two, three days ago.
Hey, hey, chill, chill. Close us out. I'm not gonna carry the deal. I'm not
Yeah, we can't. Um, anyway, Bug, we gotta get your mom on here. She can talk about how she grew up in Trench Town next to Bob Marley.
Right. And then, and then the Shirley Chisholm story.
Yeah, but then, but then your mom um, babysit Shabber Ranks when he was little, when, when
Right. Or was it Cutter Rank?
I know your momma got stories.
It was Cutter Rank.
Don't do that, Jean. Don't do that.
It was Cutter Rank. It was Cutter Rank or Shabo.
Your momma got stories, Bug. I know she do. I know she do.
It was right. I know it wasn't, I know it wasn't bigger rankers, but it was one of them. It was one of the rankings.
Bug, let's get your momma on here. First lady of the shower posse. Let's get her on this show. Okay? Let's get her on.
Hey, you know what? We need help. We need help. We just had the most awesome show. We were so adult. We were so professional, political, all of that. And the minute, the minute he is off the line.
The minute company leave, let me tell you, Bug, let me tell you what my momma used to do. Cuss us out, but when company come, when company leave, she bite the cussing us out.
Okay. So that's what we do. This is family.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I could be arguing in the, I could be arguing in my house. Like we ain't never had no argument, but when they leave, we back at it.
Yeah. When they leave, we, we arguing again. When they leave.
Yeah, we, yeah, we family.
Mm-hmm. All right, Bug, go ahead and Family episode one ninety. Um, tell your friends, send the link out. Of course, follow us at Family Radio. You can get to all of our socia's from that social media, um, um, address and just tell your friends about us, okay? That's all we want you to do. Shout out to Rockman Johnson. His is at H M A N J. Um, once again, City Council District fourteen, definitely doing his thing.
Jacksonville, Florida.
I see you, Bug. I see you, Bug. Go ahead and hit us, Bug. Take us out of here, Bug.
It's the family.